Welcome, everyone. I call the December 6, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are a review of the commission bylaws and a study session on the 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan periodic update, topics being human services, capital facilities, and utilities. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. Those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. We'll be using lights, will we?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't think it'll be a problem, but we'll be using lights to signal available time. When the yellow light appears, commenters will have 20 seconds to conclude. When the red light appears, time is up. Please note, the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also submit, asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM, and I don't believe we received any. Is that correct?
None.
Thank you. Email was encouraged as well and will also be acknowledged, although, again, we received none, so none to acknowledge. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the signup sheets. We have no attendees, so no commenters. Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Kurd?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Present.
Commissioner Anders?
Here.
And Commissioner Gustafson?
Here.
All right. I'm going to move that microphone. In addition, Senior Planner Kirsten Mant, Utilities and Development Manager Boyd Benson, Community Engagement Specialist Sarah Frost, and Mary Beth Quinn, Customer Service Specialist, are attending. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Please state your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. Before we begin, I'd like to remind commenters that while you may speak to whatever topic you choose, we ask that you're a council candidate. I guess we can delete this part. Not to use this for campaigning, but that's not an issue since the election's over. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand. I'll call on you as I see you, and this will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at once. Identify yourself before you ask a question. Make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. First agenda item is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak. Those speaking will have three minutes. The written comments, no later than 3:00 PM, were forwarded, and as I indicated, we have none. This time is for items not on tonight's agenda. I do not see any members of the public here. Is there anyone in the Zoom waiting room? There being none, therefore, I think we'll move on from this. Onto our next agenda item, the approval of the November 1 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Robson?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Kurd. A second?
Any discussion around the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor approving the November 1 minutes? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 And I see Commissioner Westerbeck also approving, so it is unanimous. The November 1 minutes are approved. New business, adoption of amended Planning Commission bylaws. So we were sent some new bylaws for the commission. The change proposed is in visitor comment, and it is more specific regarding procedures around comment. And I'll take a moment and let everyone read that. There are four paragraphs. They do come, they're consistent with the council's procedures and also consistent with the city code. It's simply formalizing for this commission what those procedures are, what those processes and procedures are.
Yeah, and I'll also qualify, there's some additional detail in the council ones that just didn't feel like it made sense to put in the commission ones, but they do largely reflect what's in the council rules.
Okay.
And our interim city attorney has reviewed this as well.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, Sarah Gustafson here. Yeah, I noted that the bylaws here were different from the council bylaws, which I think, as you said, is more appropriate because I think the council bylaws restrict people to only talking about issues in Bothell. And I think we want to encourage comment here and have more folks feeling free to speak here. The one thing I might want to ask is, if there's a threat against a city staff member, is that also grounds for at least muting a participant? What do we do if there is such a thing?
I don't know, but I think that's something we can ask our legal department.
Yeah.
I look to the last paragraph of these additions. The chair has authority to preserve order at all meetings. So you can remove a person from the meeting. I would think that muting someone would be along those lines if you're referring to people who are on Zoom, but you can ask that to be sure. Other comments around those additions? Okay. Were there any other comments on the bylaws? Did anyone else look further in up comments?
This is Commissioner Kurd. I'm wondering if the item number seven reports from, or wait, don't we have a section in our traditional order of a process for submitting comments to council?
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that should be, I don't see it reflected in the bylaws, but I'm wondering if that should be kind of codified into the bylaws.
Yeah, that is not reflected, and in fact, we added that because at one point, I think it was me, but it might have been someone else noted that the council had an item feedback from commission, so I thought it would be good for us to reflect that. So yes, we could add that. What is number eight on our agenda, on our current agenda today?
Ah, I see.
Kupla, any other comments? I have a few. Along those same lines, in item six, it refers to old business, and at one point, the former Director Cotterman and I attended a training on meetings. Anne McFarlane, excellent training, if you have the opportunity, you should, I think council members do that. She made reference to using unfinished business rather than old business, and that's what we've been doing in our agendas, but we didn't change it, so I'd like that to reflect. And the other comment on the next line, seven, reports from council liaison. There was a time when the council had members that were liaisons to each board or commission, and they sat in the audience, and they stopped doing that. So we're not going to get a report from someone who's not here.
Yeah.
So I'd suggest deleting council liaison. And the final one I have is more of a question that you might want to ask about it. In the public hearing procedures, step six is applicant's presentation. We have not always done that. The applicant has not always requested that. And should we indicate that's optional, or at their request, the applicant can make a presentation? I'm not comfortable with being a required part if it's not something we always do. Similar with step 12, applicant closing comments, if they have them. I don't know that they always have, so.
Yeah, and maybe even also applicant response to public and/or staff comments, since I don't know that that's always happened as well.
Yeah.
And I'll say, I think probably some of this came out of similarities to the process that we go through with the hearing examiner for reviewing projects, and maybe that isn't, doesn't make sense for it to be similar to that or not. So I think these really good comments, I think in the new year, we can spend some time on the staff end going through these and clarifying what we think makes sense as well, if there's other things that we can identify and bring this back to you, maybe on the meeting on the 17th.
Okay. I think it's good to have, yeah, the applicant have the option should they choose, but I don't know that it should be a requirement, and then if we have a process that has a requirement that we don't follow, I'm.
Yeah, I wonder too if that might have been a remnant of when some projects did go to Planning Commission also.
Yeah, I think, I did talk with Dave Boyd about this, who has some history, which is no longer with us, and he did say that that was part of it, that the applicants used to present, and more recently, the staff makes the presentations, so.
Sounds good.
Those were my comments. They were. Any others? So I'm thinking, we can either vote to make the change in the public comment that we all agree to, and then have staff come back with the other changes, or we can defer. I would take a motion either way on how to act on this item. Commissioner Robson?
I am motion to just defer the whole thing until staff comes back with a revised document.
Okay. I think that's probably a good idea. Is there a second?
This is Tony Anders. I second that motion.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded that we let staff take the comments made in this meeting along with the proposed changes that they brought to us and revise the minutes and bring it back to us at a future meeting. So all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. It is unanimous, so we will see this, some of us will see it at our next meeting. All right.
He can watch.
Moving along, our next item is a study session on the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan.
All right, so tonight is our last comp plan study session of the year. I know you're all going to be very sad about that. We're going to be talking about human services, capital facilities, and utilities, and then Sarah will be giving a recap of the open house that we had back in October. And we are also joined by, as Chair Karenan mentioned, Boyd Benson from Public Works, and he'll be helping me talk about the capital facilities element and then the utilities element. So at the very end of our timeline this year, so we're still finishing up some reviews and revisions to goals and policies for internal staff review, starting work on the draft environmental impact statement, that's kind of the big thing right now, and then ongoing engagement with some of the stuff online, and then we also, I also attended the KCLS session back, gosh, a couple weeks ago. And we have a new timeline slide, very exciting. So this is a little bit different than the schedule that we'd been talking about. We had to push back some things as part of the development of the land use maps, taking a little longer than we had previously thought. I'll be coming back to talk about revised guiding principles in January. I'm hoping to have an actual graphic designer design document for that, and revisions based on what we've been hearing from Planning Commission, council, as well as from the public and our work group. We'll be reviewing draft elements with staff, getting ready to get a public draft for those ready. We'll also be internally reviewing the preliminary draft environmental impact statement. We've been originally hoping to release the plan, the draft plan and the DEIS at the end of February, but that's now going to be more like the middle of April. So just an update there. That also means the open house we were hoping to have in March will also be either late April or early May. Just means the weather will be nicer, hopefully. So then we'll have our comment period during that time as well as the draft plan, and then we're hoping to start public hearings for the draft plan in sometime in May, probably coinciding with the end of the comment period for the draft EIS. And then the rest of the year is really going to be working on continuing review with the public hearing process and revisions, hoping to start the council public hearing process in Q3, could push to Q, beginning of Q4 if possible. So a lot of those are kind of subject to change based on how many review comments there are, how much change needs to happen, and then obviously adopting the plan, and then a technical memo that will be prepared for us to do code changes. And so that, code changes will be a big part of staff work beginning in, I don't know why I said 2025, that's wrong, sorry. Q4 2024, not 2025, and then beginning in 20, beginning of 2025 is when we'll be working on code updates. And then upcoming engagement, so like I mentioned, we have one more Civic Saturdays for this quarter. It's going to be in January 20th, talking about civil, civic infrastructure, and then again, a shift on the open house, we're looking more like May, and then again, ongoing engagement Upcoming meeting dates, I needed to update this slide when I found out that the 10th isn't happening, so ignore that line, but we will be coming here to talk about guiding principles and kind of revisiting the proposed schedule, reminding everyone after the winter holidays are over, and then going to council at the beginning of February. And then next week, we're going to council with human services, capital facilities, utilities, and the open house. So just a quick overview of tonight, Sarah will be giving our open house recap at the beginning. I'll be getting into the human services element, the capital facilities element, and utilities after that. And again, no specific action tonight, as we've been asking for the last few months, just general feedback and priorities in these topic areas and feedback on kind of staff recommendations there. And with that, I'm going to pass things over to Sarah.
Thanks. So the open house, we saw many of your lovely faces there. Thank you for attending and for spreading the word. A little recap of, so this was the October open house, it was called the For a Day or a Lifetime Tour, and we were really trying to connect with the public on what is this big beast of a comprehensive plan? And how do we break it down into actual bite-sized pieces and have smaller, more intentional conversations? So to get the word out about all of this, the engagement for the open house, we focused heavily on email campaigns, social media, we had, the city website was updated, Engage Bothell was heavily updated as well. We used posters out in the community, and then we did a citywide postcard mailer. So we were trying to connect with folks on multiple different levels. We also utilized our fabulous Public Works Department who put up the variable message boards for us. So those are those big signs you see on the side of the road that rotate through. They were fabulous, thank you, P-Dub. We talked about it a lot at Planning Commission meetings here, at council meetings, and then we talked about it heavily with our work group members. So with all of that, we had a fantastic turnout with about 100, over 130 people, primarily received positive feedback from the community on the event itself, with the snacks and the childcare and being in Snohomish County. So we also learned a lot of things. There will be some things that we'll be doing differently next time. We want to improve on a number of functions, but in general, it was, we felt like it was well-received and we got good feedback, so that's a win. So in order to make the comprehensive plan more bite-sized, we actually split it up into different topics. So these table topics each had their own space, they each had their own graphic board, and they each had a staff member who was sort of the expert in that field present, a staff or consultant depending on. We also were grateful to have community transit and sound, no, community transit and sound transit. Thank you, sound transit. It was sound transit, okay. Who were both there as well, and they said that they had some fantastic conversations with the community as well. So that was a great partnership that we will be continuing forward. Oh, and the second photo in that one was our very cool kids activity, so they're basically building what their neighborhood looks like and where they can and cannot build. It was very cool. Anyway, so thank you to Imagine Children's Museum for that. So we wanted to sort of summarize what we heard from sort of overall rather than very specific nitty-gritty information. So this first theme that we were hearing was finding that balance between the development and protecting nature. So we heard a lot about retaining the mature trees we do have, open spaces, really being intentional about creating that priority of having green space and better, you know, green design standards. If I could just read and speak tonight, that'd be great. Green design standards for development, how this all plays into climate and hazards and disasters and all of those things, so finding that balance between the natural environment and development. Another theme that we had was maximizing mobility. So this isn't just vehicle mobile, mobility, this is, people prioritize the following, they said walking, transit, safety, biking, driving and freight, and then transportation resiliency and emergency response. And you can see part of the photo of the activity, we had a lot of great participation. People basically could vote on what they wanted to see sort of top of the list, top of mind. Really interested in the increase, increasing walkability, active transit options, ease of use for transit through different trail networks, biking, bike lockers, smart growth, all those things. So definitely a priority of that maximizing mobility. And then the third theme we saw was advancing accessibility and affordability. So we heard a lot of this from our DEI and Human Services table. They were, they had some great conversations about how, since those are fairly new programs for us, or the programs aren't new, they're being redeveloped. There we go. We, how we're spending those monies, how those resources are allocated, what actual programs those will go to. People spoke to the desire for affordable and diverse housing choices and possible renters protections, things for accessibility, like people with disabilities, and where do they get programs and resources for that? Also, in taking that one step further, how do we do that with parks even? How do we make a park more accessible, water fountains, bathrooms, benches, as well as those sort of climate resiliency features like covered play areas, splash pads, stuff like that? So that was our parks board in that photo there, and they clearly had some really great participation there as well.
They're always the popular ones.
I know. It's not fair. So one of the things that we really want to be intentional about is how we use this feedback. So the intention for all of these sort of broad, what do you want Bothell to look like questions, is to guide the language within the drafts that we're building, to clarify what those community priorities are, like prioritizing green space and different modes of transportation, and then how that impacts the implementation. So then actually taking that feedback, saying, okay, this is what the community wants, what does that mean for implementation? So how do we get it done? So while the community will probably not see like verbatim words and suggestions, it's really taking that, that overall presence, that overall intention, and then building that in, working that in, weaving it through the entirety of the comp plan.
All right, thank you, Sarah. So I'm just going to get into the human services element first, and like we've been rolling out, this is our current draft of the icon for that. I think it's pretty nice. So, and I worked with our human services coordinator, Anand, on this to make sure that we're being consistent with the human services plan as that work is kind of ongoing concurrently with this. So we've been kind of working together to coordinate on that. That's a really big component of this to make sure that, especially since this is going to be a new standalone element for us, that it's really set up for success with the plan. The human services component of the human services and housing element as extends currently is a little bit spare, but we know that that's a priority from council to really pull this out and call it out and be much more intentional about how we serve the community through either services we have or ones that we support. So that was the big part of separating those out from each other, making sure we're coordinating with the human services plan. We're reviewing this against, like with everything else, our racial equity and environmental best practices. And reviewing the language generally, that's a comment I've had for every element, just making sure we're being really intentional with the language we use, particularly when there's maybe not a lot of it. We want to update the references to include the entire community. There's some parts of the plan that talk about like citizens, which is a little bit strange, so we want to make sure that we're referring to the breadth of the community that is involved. Again, improving inclusivity of language, addition of cultural competency, particularly when it comes to human services, that's really important. And then transit accessibility is another priority we have for that. And then I, these are pretty short, so I figured I can kind of go through these and then we can go back to what people want to prioritize talking about. And Boyd's going to help me in supporting the capital facility stuff because we're kind of tag-teaming this one. So just want to talk about first about what is the capital facilities element? It's a little bit one of the kind of wonkier components of the plan. It's required, and it's a little bit more cut and dry. We want to make sure we understand the full inventory of existing facilities in the city, and then going past the capital facilities plan, which I believe is a six-year window, we need to look at the 20-year window. So taking basically what's in the capital facilities plan, building off that, not being as specific as the six-year plan, because we can't really for 20 years, it's really hard to predict, but making sure that really is taking that into account, understanding the growth that we've been assigned for that 20-year window and how that might impact our facilities. So in terms of what's included, so this includes water systems, sanitary sewer systems, stormwater facilities, all the school districts that are within both the current boundaries of the jurisdiction, and then we have a school out in the Muga, I think that's technically an admin's mailing address, parks and recreation facilities, and that includes our open spaces, police and fire protection facilities, and then transportation facilities are addressed within the transportation element. And then I know Boyd wanted to speak to a little bit more about some of the detail.
Yeah, thank you. And just to add a bit more, and I'm mostly going to focus on the water, sanitary sewer and stormwater. And the first thing you might be asking is, why are these within the capital facilities element and not the utilities element? So since the, what we look at here are facilities that are owned and maintained by the City of Bothell, and so we think of these as capital investments. It's, it's, it's the ratepayers that own these things, but it's the city that manages that. So in some cities where maybe all their water sewer storms or water sewers provided by someone else, you might see those in the utilities element. Here, it's in the capital facilities. And since we have those there, we also address like Alderwood Water and Wastewater District and Nutt in there. So that's, that's kind of why we have these here. And as Kirsten mentioned, we need to understand what we have, so this inventory. And in the past, when you look at the previous 2015 Imagine Bothell, you'll see that we've listed out all our pressure regulating valves and all our enter ties and all these things. We're stepping back from that because it's, it's not required. We have to demonstrate there's an inventory so we understand what's there, and what we're referring to for that inventory is like the water system plan or the sanitary sewer comprehensive plan, because there's so much detail there. And that's part of the simplification that we're, we're looking at. It just makes a much stronger document because you don't need to see all that. What you're interested in is level of service. So this is what we have, and then how do we, and how are we required to provide those services? You'll see some on that. And then you'll, and just to back up even more, we, we take this really seriously, and the reason so is most of our work has regulatory requirements to the state. So our water testing, our stormwater compliance, and how we discharge sewage. So it's, it's there, that framework is there, but it's, it's the goals and policies and the rest that come out of this that make us understand, well, okay, well, we have sanitary sewer, but maybe we need to protect the environment. Well, how do we do that? And well, you know, sewer has nothing to do with the environment, but, but it does, because our sewer discharges to King County, and it gets treated and discharged to Puget Sound, and it impacts the environment. So part of that is having those goals and policies such as environmental sustainability can help us focus on, well, we can collect the sewage, we can do this, but do we need to worry about how groundwater is getting into our sewer mains and delivering more flow to King County, which isn't good for that? And the same when you look at water. Well, we want to be good to the environment and this and that. Well, it has nothing to do with how the water comes out of our taps, but it does, because there's water conservation. And part of that is, I mean, And part of that is, I mean, water mains, I'm giving you way too much information, but it kind of helps. Water mains, they leak. I don't, there's distribution system leakage. And you you look in like the southern part of the country, it might be thirty percent. Here, we can't go above ten without having a action plan, and that's part of conserving water. City of Bothell is on a running average of about three or four percent, so we're doing fine. And it's not necessarily leak, which is unaccounted for water. So when someone brings up, well, we need to conserve water, that's all part of it. So when we make sure that when you do, uh, you know, let's say, uh, removal or replace of a home, we make sure that the service lines are in good shape. We make sure that the sanitary sewer line that leaves the home isn't accepting groundwater. So most people might look at these and say, well, you know, there's not a lot to do here because it's regulatory requirements, but there are some things we do. So we're very interested in the goals and policies. So that's kind of, I just kind of wanted to state those things so you can see where we're coming from. And the last part of this, especially uh for the uh the utility systems is, well, we know what we have now. We know what we would need with respect to projects in the future under current planning, and that's what we included in the water system plan, the comprehensive sewer plan. That's what we have. We have a list of all these projects. Now, we'll be receiving different growth alternatives. It is, it can stay the same. And okay, that's great. Nothing will change. Is it going to look different here, here, or or certain type of housings here or there? And what we'll do then is we'll take that information, we'll look at the different alternatives, the different growth alternatives, the options, and we'll run them through. And we may find out that, um, I I'm just making things up. There's there's two future options. Let's keep it the way it is and let's do this. Well, we may find out that, okay, well, we don't have to apply anything else. But if we do this, we may only look at some uh water main expansion or service expansion or or a pump station or something like that. So it's pretty high level because this is a 20 year plan. This is, this is a long term plan which influences our smaller water system plans, which are like seven years, and then that influences how we do projects. So it's it's kind of this nice hierarchy. So I just kind of just wanted to explain that from a utility point of view.
Great, thanks, Boyd. So he alluded to some of these already. One is obviously totally fine. One is we obviously need to update the inventory. That's pretty clear. An assess needs projections and new projects like Boyd mentioned. And then the kind of the streamlining, so this is both to help shorten it, but also cut out information that doesn't necessarily need to be in there. And then also make sure it's not getting out of date. So there's other jurisdictions or other agencies that work within the jurisdictions that update their plans not on the same timelines as the comp plan. So if we have a bunch of information from a plan that can get out of date, then we're constantly needing to update the element or contains out of date information. So that was one of the main, one of the reasons we wanted to streamline that component. And that's pretty much it for capital facilities, so I will hand things to Boyd to talk about utilities.
Thank you. And once again, the outline of what we have to address is pretty well stated. The utilities element for the city of Bothell is, we we call them dry utilities. It's power, communication, um, and the rest of those type of utilities. Where we we need to provide those services, we need to make sure that that growth, um, you know, that these services expand to accommodate growth and the rest. And this is more of an exercise of, okay, we've identified all these these utilities. We reach out to the utility providers and we say, hey, Puget Sound Energy, you know, this is what we're thinking, you know. And and so they'll they'll have a much abbreviated uh evaluation. Puget Sound Energy serves this many people and we do this and we have this and this. And as growth occurs, we'll be uh, you know, improving to accommodate growth. And it's the same with snow put or communication systems. So it's it's more demonstrating to folks that as development occurs and redevelopment occurs, that the city is planning to make sure that these outside utility providers um will expand to accommodate those needs and be able to mitigate those impacts and provide service. And there's a list of of uh of some of the uh the providers that'll be providing input into the plan.
Yeah, these are just all the categories of utilities, just to give you an idea of the the scope of what is included in there if you haven't read through that element, which wouldn't blame you if you hadn't, but it's very important. And then, as we mentioned, again, updating information is needed to address gross. And then, as we are also recommending for the capital facilities element, working to streamline text in the same kind of manner and working with agencies on that, just to make sure things are as up to date as possible. And that's all we have in terms of a presentation, so I'll open things up for discussion.
So Commissioner, questions or comments? Richard Gustafson, I saw you earlier.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I'd like to thank Director Benson for defining the scope of capital facilities and utilities and providing some really good, strong examples of what is involved. And my question has to do with the capital facilities element that was referenced in the document. And when I followed it um and started reading the first page, there weren't the regular principles that we see in the other elements. And the reason was because I stated in the document, capital facilities support every other element and every other principle and every other element. And I think that makes sense, but I was really, really struck by the way that you mentioned a lot of guiding principles that are involved in capital facilities. And the way you said it's not related, but it's related. So I'm wondering where might that get captured or discussed, because it was a really good discussion.
For sure. Um, and uh, Utilities Manager, I, our our director is, yeah. I never want to confuse, she has way more knowledge than I'll ever have on on stuff. It is, the the capital facilities and utilities are to support and demonstrate that we can we can grow and mitigate that growth and provide services. So the the principles here, I mean, I I believe that it's it's in everything, sustainability. We look at this as as a part of sustainability. So I I I believe, in my opinion, natural environment, that all the other guiding principles in the other sections apply to the utilities as well. We're just, when I mention that regulation, I mean, we've got this, but we really do look at those goals and principles and other sections because we can, I mean, we're doing, I I mentioned the inflow into the into the sewer system. We're evaluating that right now. And part of it is we want to decrease our flow. Because if we, we have pump stations, okay, that decreases the amount of pumping. And in the future, we're we're looking at increased sewer treatment rates. And if we can demonstrate we're taking care of business at our end, we'll have a better way to to um help push that down the road for the city of Bothell. So I I'm not really answering your questions, but we do see these as really important because they give us something to point back and say, hey, our comp plan says to do this, this is how we're doing it, this is why we should spend money on it, this is why we should be eligible for grants, and this is why this is a good thing to do. So I don't, I didn't really answer your question, but um I hope that helped a little bit.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Kurd.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the presentation. Um, I always like to hear about utilities, my favorite. So I'm gonna try and look at Commissioner Gustafson's question at a different angle, which is, to what extent does this element of the comp plan allow the city to advocate for the principles behind the comp plan to the other utilities? So like, right now, we get our water from the Tolt and the Tolt is undergoing a FERC relicensing of their dam. So does this comp plan really allow the city to come forward with the, like, the basic principles when, you know, the city and other partners who use water from the Tolt are asked about, you know, their opinion about relicensing and that sort of stuff?
For sure. I'm gonna give the utility answer to that, and then I, and Kirsten may have some some thoughts on this because it is all interrelated. We really, as utilities, we really see the comp plan as overarching, like I mentioned. It's it's just really, this is what we want to see. So when we talk about FERC relicensing or we're now going through SPU contract negotiations for supply, that's that's, it's it's really not in there, but the goals and the rest that will help frame the discussion are there. So I think what you're asking is probably more within like the water system plan, where we look at source and and we we've we've come to planning commission once or twice in the past, like this we're playing. And we should probably do that more in the future because I think it's good for people to understand these documents that implement the comp plan. But I think the more detailed information, you know, water rights and and how we do things and how we go about stuff, maybe not FERC relicensing at the Tolt, but resiliency and and making sure that everyone understands that if the Tolt goes down, we're back through the cedar. That's all in the water system plan. So uh, yeah. This provides the framework and guidance and the plan kind of says how we're gonna implement it. And then the last part is the capital facilities plan that that these are the projects and programs we're going to do to implement a plan. So um, once again, I'm not really sure I'm answering your question, so maybe Kirsten.
I think maybe the only other thing I'd add is, um, one of the reasons that we decided to do the iconography this go around is to really reflect the interrelatedness of all of the elements. So I think that that could be reflected in terms of like environmental related decisions that affect utilities. There might be some room for kind of cross referencing those, whether that be the natural environment element or the climate element. So that's kind of the thought process behind why we decided to go that route in terms of, you know, making sure that people know that these elements don't exist in a silo. There's, we have to make decisions about which goals and policies go in which elements, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't, there couldn't be an argument to put it somewhere else as well, so.
One more, because I might be able to be better on this one as well, but after what you said, let's take stormwater. All right, there'll be goals and policies for stormwater, and then the stormwaters management plan and implements those. But tree canopy, I know people are, well, that's sustainability, that's environment. Well, it's actually stormwater as well. That's part of our National Pollution Discharge Elimination permit requirement to do this, so it's it's really interrelated. And then when people talk about wetlands and critical areas and streams, well, that's great for planning, but the stormwater utility is responsible for that as well. We're actually out there measuring those things. So once again, it it all kind of just links together. I didn't know about the iconography, but that makes really good sense because it's 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 all together.
Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones here. Uh, thank you so much. Very interesting uh presentation. My questions are probably a little bit more pragmatic and also probably more from a curiosity standpoint. So I have three questions. So the first one is, uh, especially in terms of looking at the capital facilities, but I guess it also applies to the utilities a little bit. Just curious, how do you, how do you pay, how does the city of Bothell pay for the additional services, capital facilities that might be required due to the growth that's expected in this, in the city? And the 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 type of growth that might occur, which might be different than what happened in the past, might be more dense in certain areas than other areas, et cetera. How is that handled?
That's the first question, right? Once again, I'm gonna get way into the weeds, but it's it's always good to to provide a framework since you folks are, I mean, yeah. So this is, this is good. So we look at the utilities holistically. And let's, I'm gonna take water, for example, because it's really easy. I mean, it's 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 arteries, it's transmission lines and it's veins, and it's the whole thing. So my little toe benefits from the blood that come, this is a dumb analogy. But so when people say, well, how do we look at density? It's it's really, it's it's not who's using it or how it's used, it's it's how it's being used. So when you talk about paying for improvements, what we do is if, let's say downtown has expansive growth and we have to install a bunch of improvements. Well, part of that is we can, we can make sure that when development arrives, it pays its fair share. And those are the capital facility charges where you basically buy into the system because you're all ratepayers of some sort. Maybe you're not on our water district, but cities. And the the people, the ratepayers have paid for that. So someone comes in, they're benefiting from the reservoirs that have been built or the pump stations. They pay their fair share, and that's that's part of a financial evaluation. And then there's the rates and you pay for the usage. So we make sure that that is equitable. If it's something like downtown where it was a bunch of just, you know, school district facilities and and underused utilized properties. Well, when that came in, the city installed improvements. And then we took out, the city, it was amazing vision. Take out loans to do Horse Creek for stormwater and to install roads and utilities. And then we actually uh collect funds because the city's built their frontage and put their utilities in. So there's there's that approach. You can, the facility charges to, you know, buy into the system and pay for future projects to take care of expansion. There's a rate you're paying your fair share of what you use. And then in certain cases, it's like downtown, the city did it and we get a, you know, that's not we, the city gets to be reimbursed. So when Lot D came in, they paid frontage and utility charges from the construction that occurred, you know, seven, eight, nine years ago, and it's it's really good. So we really try to make sure that uh development pays its fair share. And what I'll say with with city councils, I think that they support that vision. Because right now, if you have a lot, you want to build a home, that's great. I mean, it's easy to do. If you have a lot and you want to build thirty homes, well, you've you've expanded impact. And then you didn't quite answer the question, but you you mentioned there's different housing types and different other types come in. Well, part of like House Bill eleven ten is there's affordability and there's barriers and the rest. And there's two ways to look at this. One is, well, these certain uses shouldn't pay and and, you know, there's not enough, and I'm gonna say things I shouldn't say, but there's not enough middle housing, so let's not, let's not pay. That, um, I'm I'm pretty happy to say is 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 not how it's going. It's, they should pay their fair share, that use. So does an ADU have the same burden on the utility system as a single family residential? Well, you have a three thousand square foot home, we have to put in a three quarter inch water meter because that's the smallest one we've got. You have an ADU with your own service, you're gonna get a three quarter inch water meter. So right now, there's one facility charge for three quarter inch water meter, whether you're a thousand square foot ADU or a three thousand square foot home. That's how it's set up, so that's what we have to charge. What we've done with council input and and feedback from everybody is, well, maybe we should right size that. So um as part of the 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 rate updates and the facility charge updates that were just passed last night, is we've developed a small dwelling unit category, and that's for the facility charges. So when a home comes in and they require a three quarter inch meter because they have three bathrooms and a, you know, kitchen and and laundry and a bunch of hose bibs, they'll pay a facility charge of X um for water. And an ADU comes in which has fewer connections and fewer potential to have big burdens on the system because it's it's really peak flow. It's not how much you use, it's peak flow. Then they're, actually for water, they're paying point five one X, which is great. So we're we're looking at those different uses because we we will see change in in buildings. So we're trying to be proactive on that, and the city of Bothell is doing a pretty good job on that.
Wow, that's really impressive and a great explanation. So thank you very much. Second question is, uh, I think I get, I'm thinking about future infrastructure and I'm thinking about charging stations. And I didn't hear anything about that in the utilities section.
Well, that'll be in the transportation element, yeah. Because, I mean, part of this is, I'm sure that in the utilities section, there'll there'll be mention that you need to make sure you have an electrical grid that can support these future impacts and these uses and stuff. And I'm not saying it's in the transportation element, but that'll, I think that'll be more looked at is how will our transportation system change? I mean, will buses be driving over charging pads and and will we need this or that or this or that? So it'll it'll be mentioned, just, I mean, as as things change and we see more charging stations, yeah. In the utilities element, electrical, there there better be a comment from PSE and Snow Put. And if there isn't, we'll ask, what are you doing to support increased demand for electrification? But there may be more of of that evaluation with respect to transportation and how we see things change in the future.
But definitely, that's an area where there's an overlap between those sections. And so there'll be some, this is a good example of where there'll be some coordination, I would assume, right? And then the last question, I promise, is um, and demand response. Are you looking at demand response as part of the utility management for your electrical systems? And it also is related to charging stations and all kinds of other aspects, especially given that the city of Bothell has a thriving industry within its, within the city limits, et cetera.
And you're saying demand response with respect to?
Demand response management with with respect to um.
Like peak usage?
Yeah, peak usage, where you're accessing your energy sources from, are your digital capabilities to sort of manage that over time. It could be with homeowners as well. It's just, it's just sort of thinking down the road, since we're thinking about a long range plan.
It it's a good one to note, and it's a good one we should probably follow up on because we we look at that with water. I mean, we're in charging, installing smart meters. For demand response for electrical and and the rest, I, that's out of my wheelhouse, but we can definitely make a note that 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 be common upon.
I see Commissioner Westerbeck has raised his hand.
Yes, thank you. This is Commissioner Westerbeck. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, Boyd, I appreciate it very much. I I like talking about utilities too. It's interesting to me. It crosses over with my work some too. We hear a lot, um, you know, this is comp plan. We hear a lot, you know, this is comp plan, so it's the future and everything. There's a lot of concern in the, in the community about capacity, you know, will there be enough of water, sewer capacity, obviously roads, that's not something for tonight, electricity and so forth. And I, I've often run across these stats, whether it was local or, or, you know, in other parts of the world, but that we're getting a lot more out of our existing utilities because we've become so good at conservation, water, power, et cetera. I don't know if you can speak to that. I know, I know that happens. And I, I think there was an evaluation by your staff, maybe when they were evaluating the middle housing proposal for, for that very reason as well, sort of what sort of stresses is put on our system. And I think about like when I was growing up, you know, toilets flushed five gallons each or something, 5.2 or something, right? Now, we're down to 1.6 and things like that. I'm sure you guys have been thinking about that all the time, but I don't always, I don't always know how to answer those questions or, or put, put that in perspective about, are we getting a lot more out of our existing capacity just because of the technologies we've developed over, over the years?
Yeah, for sure, Kerry or Mr. Westerbeck. It's, it's, it's really interesting. When you look at water consumption for SPU in their service area, it, and I, I just, I just need to get the graph out. It is, in the 90s, they were worried about running out of water. Remember Cascade Water Alliance and all this stuff, and what are you going to do in conservation? The conservation effort and the retrofits, you know, some people think development's bad, but smart development's great. And with the development we're seeing is, we're actually seeing a per capita use that's declining almost every year. So, as the population increases, the per capita use declines. So, when we look at water, and it was the same with that facility charge discussion we just had, is we actually looked at like the equivalent burden of some of these smaller homes, and it is much less. So, if, if you end up having, you know, middle housing or ADUs and you get two units on a property, well, it, it's not two impacts, it's 1.5, like I said. So, I don't think that'll be quantified in this. There are long range impacts, you know, but it is, it is a good thing to bring up. It's the same with sewer, and actually with water, like I said, the leakage, we can minimize that, and Bothell and most people do really well in this, in this area. With sewer, it's a different story, and that's why we are looking. I mentioned the infiltration inflow, INI specifically, because, I mean, the city is, on the CFP, it's 500,000 every two years to, to look at this, and we're actually starting a cure-in-place pipeline program where old concrete segmented sewer pipe with no gaskets that are literally three-foot sections, that's what used to be built. You can, you can insert an epoxy-coated sleeve, basically, and cure it, and it's, and it's as good as a new pipe. And what that does is it decreases the inflow and infiltration, so it decreases the burden from these homes because you're getting rid of that, that, that surcharge. And also, the, we're doing also to keep rates down because it decreases maintenance. You don't, you have less roots and less repairs and things like that. So, it's, once again, it's all interrelated, Kerry, but I, I'm not sure how to get that message across, but I think I just need to get that plot to show the regional water consumption. And, and there are regional goals, and they, they've stayed about 1.1 billion gallons MGD per, per day for the region, and it's, it's not going up. So, I, I think a message to, to say is, with smart growth, yeah, there's more people, but they're using less resource per, per capita.
Yeah, sort of like when we do a, a multi-family building versus a single-family house, there, it's more efficient per unit just by the nature of the, of the beast, as it were, as of the product, so makes sense. That's great, I appreciate that. I, I kind of thought that was probably the trend, because I know, of course, you know, the numbers are going up, you're, you're sort of increasing demand, but like you say, the same time, we're learning how to use it all better and be more efficient with it. So, that's, that's great news. Sounds like it's set us on a sustainable course for now. Appreciate it, Mr. Smith, and thank you.
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you, and this is all just really, really fascinating to find out how utilities and smart growth are affecting our future. And I'd like to kind of expand a little bit from that because on the commission, a lot of times what we're hurt, what we hear as our population grows is, but we need to update our infrastructure before we allow more people to come in. And my, my sense is that when they mean that, they usually just mean traffic, but let, maybe we should talk about some of the other elements in our capital facilities and how we can't, what, what are we doing right now to predict what we need from our schools, from our police? Very often, we hear about increased crime as we get a bigger population. So, how, what's the process there as we are, you know, foreseeing this growth? What are we doing to update our infrastructure? How do we predict that? What's the process there so we can inform constituents when they come knocking on our doors?
I can give it a shot for utilities again, and once again, it, it's almost like you're feeding me questions that I've asked you to ask to help educate folks. So, with, with new development, yeah, how are we mitigating those impacts? One, I mentioned the facility charges so we can do projects, but the other is, is when these projects come in, per the municipal code and the standards, they must upgrade everything. So, we're finding that, that that work is incredibly valuable, and it's even the same with roads. I mean, now, when someone comes in, if there's a substandard road that's two inches thick, our standards say you will rebuild that to current standards on your frontage. So, the message I would say if someone says, no, we don't want this, this development that is going to overload our utilities and this and that, is answered, well, you know, if it's done well and it's smart growth, it can actually make things better. You get, you get more schools when you have more students, and you can afford, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Bothell High School looked a lot different 30 years ago. You can afford those improvements, and it, it, when you look at the economies of scale, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to speak for police or fire, but if you have that greater tax base, you know, your, your service area may not get a lot bigger, but you may be able to provide resources that get better, and other things for fire. I'm not speaking for them, but we've updated standards that if, so for certain uses, that, that residential fire sprinklers are required, if it's on a private road or this, that. So, those additional impacts are being mitigated in a boatload of ways with respect to those, those type of actions.
So, if I may just clarify, all of that is covered by the capital facility fees and then other updating requirements that new development is required to not only update, but then they invest in capital development facility fees, which will help with schools, will help with police, because they won't be, you know, providing their own officers, but those fees then go to improve the infrastructure that current citizens are so concerned about?
For sure, and to be a little, even more, a little more clear is, take police and fire out of the argument. If you just look at utilities, so they're, they're paying their capital facility charge fees to bind the system and do projects, they're paying their rates, so, and they're also improving all the infrastructure, which is, which is good. And then the police and fire, I, I would say that's more of a, a tax base, base and economies of scale, so, yeah, there's more people, but it's still the same area, and we're going to mitigate those things with like fire sprinklers and things like that.
And we do have development impact fees for a number of these topics as well, particularly schools, or the school impact fee is probably the most expensive one that we have, and that's set by North Shore. And they also maintain their own sort of growth plans. I will say, I know when it comes to the capital facilities element, fire does have like a level of service, which I believe is based on response time, if I remember correctly. I don't think that that is in place for police, it's not a requirement, but it's something that could potentially be a topic area. We're meeting to chat with them next week on the capital facilities plan. And so, you'll see that in the drafts, there'll be a, a chart talking about level of service for the different topic areas in the element.
And on fire, which is really cool, is, well, do we care about response time? It's like, well, yeah, someone, you know, seconds help, right, because of heart attacks, but it also directly impacts your homeowner's insurance. So, things like that, people don't really connect the dots, but all these things, once again, are interrelated, and, and it's, it's pretty cool. So, I mean, that's how sometimes you cite new stations, and Bothell's pretty well-developed. But when we, when we do new projects, new transportation projects, this and that, that's, response time's really important because we don't want to increase our response times to a point where all of a sudden someone's kicked up to the next bracket. And so, so once again, it's, it's kind of all in the same package.
Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. This is all really fascinating, and I think I might have missed it, I don't know if you said it, but when we're looking at development and expansion, how do we know what a developer is going to need or how much of an impact the developer is going to need to offset in order for us to assign rates or whatever the mitigation is going to be?
This is great, so I can give a plug for transportation. So, Kirsten mentioned impact fees. So, there's a fire impact fee, there's a park impact fee, and there's also transportation impact fee. So, for transportation, currently, what we look at is how many vehicle trips will they generate, which impacts traffic, and it happens to be vehicle trips in the evening or morning commute, they say PMP hour trips. So, we can say, single-family residents generates 1.01 trips, and a multifamily generates .51 per unit. And so, we can, we can say, it's all statistical based on national averages, we can say, okay, it's going to have this burden, you're going to pay this impact fee, and you're going to mitigate that, and those funds are used to, to do the improvement projects to directly, impact fees are designed to directly mitigate growth. It's not to bind the system. So, we have to demonstrate that, that these fees are collected and then spent on projects that expand our capacity. So, that's one. And then for water, once again, I mentioned like the 3/4 inch meters, that facility charge, a 3/4 inch meter can deliver a certain amount of flow and, and this and that, which has a certain amount of impact. And so, it's, if, if you have more flow, let's say you have a really big house, you might have to upsize to a 1-inch meter, and that has a much higher facility charge. So, the way we can scale the facility charges is based on their service size. And once again, that's, that's that kind of wrinkle when our smallest meter's 3/4 and someone's using less, we don't have a half-inch meter, that's how we've reduced it. So, it, it really is for streets, it's trips. For water and sewer, it's, it's, it's basically, we call them equivalent residential units. So, if, if you're getting sewer service, you have to pay a facility charge, and, and something that has multiple bathrooms and lots of fixtures and all this stuff will kick it up over the standard residential, so that's how we do that. And then storm is, is impervious area, and, and stormwater, I've been kind of silent on because it's not like a pressure system or a gravity flow system. As development comes in, they have to install facilities that directly, you know, clean the water and slow it down. But they're also buying into everything we do, and we can charge a facility charge on that. That helps, you know, you could say it helps to pay for the sweeper, pay for these retrofits because people are driving vehicles or, or pay for oversizing stormwater lines, and that's based on impervious area. So, they actually measure the area. So, yeah, streets, impacts measured and mitigated based on trips, water meter size, sewer flow, and then storm is impervious area.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other commissioners? Couple of comments. Well, one mitigation, actually, this commission talked about was the open space requirements with development. So, it's not exactly utility-related, but it is something else that's looked at with growth. I guess, starting from the most general, I would, we started this item talking about the open house, and I, I'd like to praise how that was done, having attended it, and just recognize the staff for doing that. So, back there behind the podium, right? It, it was well done. I think the attendance was very impressive. As one who's done a number of public meetings, I was very impressed by the number of people that were there. You, you talked about the reduced per capita use in new development, and that's a really important message, too. I, I don't know that that is out there, and it really, I mean, you should sing your own praises for that. It's, it's an accomplishment that shouldn't be overlooked. And finally, perhaps betraying my past, looking at, I guess it would be in utilities, something that I think is worthy of mention is the recology store and the solid waste element, and I know that's provided by a public, a private company under contract to the city. Others who bid on that contract did not propose that. I, I think it's, it's a, I use it. You get that styrofoam packaging, and you can bring it there and they recycle it, and other hard-to-recycle things. I, I think it's worthy of recognition in the plan so that the next time the city goes out for solid waste collection services, that's a requirement rather than a, an option that someone proposes. Those are my comments, others? I like utilities, too.
I'm talking way too much, and this is my place, but even, even like with recology, I mean, tho- those goals and policies are there for a reason. So, if, if, if people see ways to fine-tune goals and policies that make something like that easier, yeah, the city embraces recycling and this and that, and providing services that are easily acceptable or accessible to the community or something like that. Those are the type of things that someone in the future, none of us, but the recology, the contract folks can say, hey, it's right here in these goals and policies, and we'd like to, to make sure that's included. Otherwise, it's just, you know, it's, it's something that's just out there.
Yeah. I was involved in a few solid waste comprehensive plans, so I understand how that works. Others? Well, I, I think, because you've heard, the commission is very interested in these topics, and I want to thank staff for coming and making these presentations. It's been very informative. I mean, we try to inform ourselves and read it, but sitting here, we learn as you speak, so thank you for that. Unless there are other comments, I think that would close this item?
I believe so, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, our next item is reports from staff.
We don't have any reports from staff, I don't think. Oh, we talked about that in the presentation, so I have that timeline in the presentation. We'll be coming back to talk about that again in January, so.
Did you have an update on what happened at the council meeting regarding items that were before us, the downtown, the Tahoe and?
Yes, so both public hearings went last night for middle housing and for the Tahoe amendments and rezoning of the Drews parcel, and those passed. I believe those were all just comp plan amendments. I believe we're bringing back middle housing code in March, I want to say, but I can clarify that with Jason. He had a very long evening.
Good, thank you. Reports from members. Well, I'll say a couple of things. One is, I was driving up 73rd and Kenmore and noticed the sidewalk, and it was raised up, and it occurred to me that they protected their trees. I mean, so often, tree roots uproot sidewalks, and the solution is take down the tree. Drive up 73rd and look on the west side, there are a couple of places where they clearly raised the sidewalk near some large trees. No doubt, it costs money, but with preservation of canopy being so important, I think it's something worth taking a look at. And again, I drove by, I didn't, it was rainy, I didn't stop and get out and look, I probably should have, but the first one, I went huh, but there were several of them in a row that were quite interesting, and I'm sure that's what it was, protection of those tree roots, so that. And I guess for the final comment I'll make, I believe this is Commissioner Kurd's last meeting.
It is.
It has been a, we have been honored by having him on this commission. He always is very well-informed, contributes mightily to the discussion. Our loss is the council's gain, so thank you for the time you've spent here, enjoyed working with you, and look forward to sending you material from this commission for you to act on. So, thank you, Kirsten.
Yeah, well, thank you, and, thank you. I, I have a special place in my heart for planning commission because these are the nitty-gritty details that are often overlooked, but we all depend on the way our city is planned and the way that it's run in day-to-day operations. So, thank you for all of your curiosity, too, your questions and your, the strengths that you bring to planning commission. I'm taking those strengths with me to council, and I will be encouraged to still tune in and listen in and hopefully hear from you to what's important, and when people give public comment and you listen thoughtfully and carefully and you consider, that's really important. So, thank you. You've all made my time on this board really special, so. And thank you to staff, too, for putting up with my incessant comments. More to follow.
All right, are there any other comments this evening? It is a quick meeting. I don't believe we have anything to report to council. This has been a study session mostly, so looking around the table and seeing none, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Commissioner Kurd. I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Jones, seconded.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It is unanimous, there being no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned at This is our last meeting of the year, and I believe at this point, the next meeting is scheduled for January 17th, although watch your announcements for confirmation. So I hope you all have very nice holidays and a Happy New Year, and see you all soon.
Thank you.